Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting, November 13th, 2023. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from the agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on November 21st, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. And I usually let you know, 10:30 a.m. is the time they begin to address the planning items, so it could be after that if it's being reviewed at that time and you plan to attend. Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which I've already received a few, which are available in the commission chambers right in the back here, and you can submit them. I don't think we need roll call. Jim's the only one that's absent this morning, jury, and I'll note that for the record, please. First item on the agenda is approval of the October 23, 23 minutes. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes that's submitted in your packet?
Yes.
I do have a recommendation that we need to make a change. It is on page 16 of those minutes, and what it is, it's item number seven that we used for consideration, we considered to review, and it was a second motion we'd done, and we need to add, after the word "deny" on the motion, "per staff's recommendation, special considerations, et cetera." And the reason we need that is that was why we did reconsider, in the first place, there was certain verbiage done in the staff's recommendation, and that's why we needed to reconsider, because we voted to approve, if you'll remember, and then the vote actually went four to three not to approve, which, of course, when we did this motion, this one went the same way, was reworded per the attorney's request. Anybody have a question on that? Thank you. Anybody else have a clerical item they'd like to add to the minutes? Hearing none, chair would accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve the October 23, 2023 minutes. That's a hard one to say. Anyway, per the submission in the agenda with the revision, as noted for the record. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Have you all had a chance to review your agenda packet? If so, the chair would address a motion to approve our agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to the consent agenda. Brittany, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review, CUR 12-04, for 7260 Tennyson LLC, to review a multifamily dwelling, a triplex, and suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 1204, with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review, CUR 1428, for Matt Cavaney, to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 1428, with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review, CUR 1820, for William and Carissa Bussie, to review an existing shop building with living quarters to be used as a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 1820, with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review, CUR 1823, for BCS Invest LLC, to review six storage units in a caretaker-manager's residence in a general commercial district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 1823, with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review, CUR 2250, for Valley Community Church, to review the allowing of an illuminated on-prem assignment in 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 2250, with conditions. Item number eight is conditional use permit review, CUR 2166, for Recreational Adventures Company, to review an employee housing dormitory building for seasonal workers in Highway Service District, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 2166, with conditions. Item number nine is Plan Unit Development Review, PUR 0408, for Six S Properties LLC, to review a plan unit development that allows up to five residential lots in a neighborhood commercial area, and staff recommends approval of Plan Unit Development Review, PUR 0408, with conditions. Item number 10 is Plan Unit Development Review, PUR 0902, for the Salvation Army, to review the Salvation Army Camp Plan Unit Development, and staff recommends approval of Plan Unit Development Review, PUR 0902, with conditions. Item number 11 is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review, PU 1806, for Catherine Sapinski, to review an existing plan unit development to allow a single-family residence to be used as a vacation home rental, and staff recommends to end Major Plan Unit Development Review, PUR 1806, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number 12 is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review, PUR 19-06, for Rockerville Gold Town LLC, to review an amendment to an existing plan unit development to allow for townhomes, apartments, and commercial businesses, and staff recommends approval of Major Plan Unit Development Review, PUR 1906, with conditions. And finally, item 13 is Major Plan Unit Development Overlay Amendment, PUR 23-02, for Katie Smirnova and Brett Wallfish, to review an existing plan unit development to allow a specialty resort, and staff recommends approval of Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Development Review, PUR 23-02, with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Any items that the staff would desire to have polled at this time?
Don't have at this time.
The commission, any items that you would desire to have polled at this time? All right, I'd like to have item number five and number 12 polled, please. Audience, anyone from the audience would like to have an item polled at this time for discussion? Onto item number five. Mine's is simple, and you don't need to go through the whole thing. I explained to you where my question is at. This particular approval, and I don't have any problem approving it, is, it appears to me that we now have a situation where we require, we would require this unit to be like on a separate parcel as we're handling it, or if it was together, it would be handled as a different matter. Is that not correct?
That's true. These structures were built in the 1960s before our zoning ordinance in 1994, so I believe that this was non-conforming at the time, but under other circumstances, we would not, under current circumstances, we would not allow a second dwelling on a property without an additional conditional use permit.
Thank you, Megan. That was my point. I felt for the record, we need to note, so people don't use this as a precedent, that this is the situation we're approving, as is. We're approving something that's been in standing and was handled at that time. Thank you. I would move that we approve item number five, per staff's recommendations, CUR 18-20.
Second.
Thank you for your second. Been moved and seconded to approve item number five, CUR 18-20, per staff's recommendations. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 12.
Should we approve the other items prior to item 12 and 5?
Oh, we had the motion, didn't we? I watched Megan walk out. Thank you. Caught me twice in two meetings. I would.
I would move to accept the consent agenda, less items five and 12.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept our published consent agenda, less items number five and number 12. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 12. I only had one question. I felt more comfortable because of the situation and the size of this unit, if we were to review it in a shorter period than one year, and I actually think it would help all of us. I would think the owner and his agent would feel more comfortable knowing that the commission is kept up to date, so I was going to recommend that we do it quarterly, not yearly. I realize that puts more work on you. Is that something that we could do?
Yes, the commission can change that condition if they want, to a quarterly instead of in a year.
I don't know. How do the other commissioners feel? I think the owner needs to know where we're at as he proceeds, and to wait one year before we look at this again actually sets them up in a tough situation, or us in a tough situation. So I just felt like it'd be nicer to see, like Mr. Bell's letter was excellent, bringing me up to speed where the difficulties are at, and there are a number of difficulties that they face as a developer and as a contractor in the size of this unit. Go ahead.
There's so many moving parts in this thing. I think that would probably be a good idea, rather than wait a full year. A lot can happen in a year.
Well, I don't disagree with checking more often than once a year. I think quarterly might be a little excessive. The wheels of construction turn pretty slow, so I would recommend biannual.
I would agree with Kevin.
I'd go with that.
Yeah, you could live with that. Six months flies by pretty fast when you're trying to get things done.
Thank you. Somebody like to make a motion changing it to, you know, twice a year, for now?
Charlie, point of order. You already voted on number five? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. No, we're talking 12 on this time.
Hey, I apologize. I thought you were still talking.
No, we're on 12. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I move that we amend condition 23 to every six months rather than one year.
And approve per staff's recommendation?
And approve per staff's recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 23-16, per staff's recommendation, with item number 23 changed to read "six months" rather than "one year." Discussion.
I would just comment, I've been out there lately, but that is such a nice-looking little, it's first class.
Well, and I kind of stuck up for him before the meeting. I don't care what problems you encounter. When you're a developer or contractor and you run into these things, and we have our weather season here, they have to make decisions that sometime aren't as favorable to our agreement as they might have made, and suffer the consequences, and they're not crying about the consequences. So they've made some decisions that are in our book, and they've explained that they are running ahead of a couple of approvals, but they haven't ducked answering our considerations, and they have not ducked our meetings, as I understand it, with the department. And so I'm more in favor of moving on and just keeping on top of it and see how it all works out.
Chair, quit saying that word. Dwayne and I had, quit saying, I'm gonna keep saying the word. Just what I do. So, Dwayne, you're code enforcement person for the planning. We had went out and looked at a bunch of properties, then we went out there, and Pat Hall was out there, so for full disclosure, we had visited with them and told them they needed to come in and visit with Brittany and the planning department, and I'm glad this, they found a solution out there, because there was a lot of moving parts that needed to be corrected, and the planning staff did an amazing job at working with solution and getting them in the meetings and making sure these things were done. So I'm with Kevin. The development is beautiful, but they're just needed some, they were having difficulties coming in and doing what they're supposed to on some of this, and some of it they might have, I don't know, not known some.
Made decisions we wouldn't have agreed with at the time?
Well, I didn't want to say that, but that's what I'm saying, is that it's amazing that that had so many moving pieces and parts, and the staff took the time out to make sure that this was corrected, it was done right, and we're making this, as Kevin says, beautiful development, move forward. So I appreciated that. It takes a lot of work to get where you need to and to correct some issues and make sure everybody's on the same page, and they did that as the planning department, so I appreciated that.
Thank you for your input, Deb. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're moving on to item number 14. Is that correct?
That's right.
There will be just a moment here. Morning Commissioners. Jason Tennyson, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 14 is Lot Line Adjustment Platte, LPL 23-23, to reconfigure lot lines to create lots B and C of Morse subdivision number one. The applicants are Ruth and Vern Hendrickson. Their agent is KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 13150 Big Bend Road. As it sits today, the properties are 2.21 acres, currently zoned suburban residential district. Existing land use is residential. Access is off Big Bend Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So you'll see on the screen here, the non-highlighted lines are the existing lot lines, the highlighted lines are the proposed lot lines. So Lot B will be .6 acre, and will be vacant. Lot C will be 1.31 acres. It'll have the single-family residence, detached garage, a shed, and an operating permit for the septic system. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and we did not receive any objections or concerns. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are proposing to consolidate nine lots in order to create two, so less density is always better in that area. Proposed lots meet the minimum lot size requirements for current zoning districts, which is suburban residential. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. With that, staff recommends approval of Lot Line Adjustment Platte 23-23 with one condition.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Jason, I'm a little foggy on this easement thing. What are we?
You're talking this one here?
Yeah.
Yep, so that's going to be shared access and utility easement. There's a well right over here on this lot, and they will be providing water to Lot B.
So it's not an easement far as vehicles? It's strictly a?
There is. If you see an aerial photo, you can see how Big Bend kind of runs into Highway 44, so there is a little H lot here to provide that access, and I believe a portion of that driveway does go within that access, utility easement.
Okay, all right. Yep, no problem.
Additional questions for Jason? We don't have any additional questions. The chair would take a motion. Moved and seconded to approve LAPL 23-23, per staff's recommendation, with, I'll let you know, one condition, it looks like. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 15. Megan.
Megan Talich, Planner. Agenda item number 15 is Conditional Use Permit, CU 23-35, and it is to allow an efficiency dwelling unit on the subject property. The applicant and owner is Glenda Runn, and the exist, or the location is at 1392 Ford Necky Oak Road. The lot size is three acres. Current zoning is rural residential district, and existing land use is residential. There's no flood hazard on the property. When considering conditional use permits, staff takes into account seven criteria, and they are listed on the screen. During the interdepartmental review, there were two comments received, two major comments with concerns. In 2016, the highway department requested that they remove an approach as a condition of approval for one of their current approaches. They will have to go through the highway department to obtain a permit to restore the third nor the most approach to its previous condition or to maintain the ditch on Necky Oak. And then county addressing and 911 commented that the address needs to be posted on the structure. On May 27th of 2022, staff opened a violation, and the violation notice was sent on June 3rd, 2023. This efficiency dwelling unit has been in place since before that violation was opened, so it is currently on the property. It has its own utilities, own septic, own water, and own access, and although the structure has wheels, staff found that the structure is anchored to the ground and has a residential appearance. Because it was placed before obtaining this conditional use permanent building permit, a building permit still needs to be applied for and applicable late fees paid, but with the approval of this conditional use permit, the current violation on the property will be closed. And so staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CU 23-35, with 12 conditions.
Questions for Megan?
One of those stupid questions. I looked through the code. What's the difference between a deficiency dwelling and a tiny home?
They are the same, it's just terminology.
The same square footage and all that?
Exactly. It has to be under 400 square feet.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I just noted one thing. It's more of a question than a, the address that's on the rock, and you noted that it had to be on the unit. Is the size of those numbers going to meet the code?
Um.
For the first responders? I don't believe so. I think they have to be bigger, but that's why I was asking.
My other concern is the color of them kind of blends in with the rock, so I will be sure to address that with the applicant when I.
Yeah, I believe there's a size noted in the ordinance that they have to be able to be seen from so many, which kind of refers to a size.
Yes.
They look a little small. Anything else for Megan while we're on this? Item number 15. Anyone here in the audience to speak on this one? Chair will address a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
CU 2335.
Moved and seconded to approve CU 23-35, per staff's recommendation, with 12 conditions. Discussion from the audience. Anyone here would care to discuss that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 16, I believe we're up to now.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we combine 16 and 17 for discussion purposes, but vote on them separately.
There's a second to that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to combine number 16 and 17 for discussion purposes only. It should be noted that that has to pass by a two-thirds majority, and each item not under that 16 and 17 will have to be voted on individually. Based on that understanding, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It was unanimous, jury, so go ahead.
All right. Agenda items 16 and 17 are comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone to change future land use and rural resid, from rural residential, future land use and current zoning from rural residential district to low-density residential district. The properties in question are part of the Pactola Heights subdivision, which is a total of 30.27 acres. These parcels range from 1 to 1.5 acres roughly. The current, the existing land use is residential and vacant. There is a single house on one of the properties, and there is no flood hazard in the area. Pactola Heights was subdivided in 1979, and the subdivision has remained mostly unimproved since the creation of the subdivision. At the time of subdivision, the standard that they were under was a one-acre minimum with 25-foot setbacks, and the applicant is concerned with topographical restraints with a 25-foot setback. Staff recommends to continue this item because a variance is needed for the well lot, which is currently .04 acres, which does not meet the .5-acre minimum of low-density residential. I have received that variance since writing the staff report, and it will be heard on the December 5th Board of Commissioners meeting, so staff would recommend this item be continued to the November 27th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan? I have one. I just, more of a statement. I guess before, I'd want to change what's already there, and without public utilities, I would sure like to see some idea what the lot configurations or the final thing's going to look like. Some idea, I don't care if it's on a napkin, so to speak, but we are changing something that's already been approved under a set of circumstances.
Yes. I do have the plans from 1979, and I can include that, but it doesn't have much information beyond what's on the plat. It doesn't have a plan for electrical or for water. I think the original plan was to use the well lot to supply a lot water, but now they're drilling another well for every two to three parcels, so I can ask for a more substantial site plan that they're planning. I know that they're doing road improvements at the moment. Also, to meet the criteria they would need to meet for this, that they plan on finishing before December. But what I have currently doesn't have a complete site plan for utilities such as water.
My biggest concern was we're dropping from three acres to a half an acre. That's quite a change, and I realize there's one or two small parcels in that area already at that density, but it still would concern me and the planning, I guess, involved in it. Go ahead, Megan.
None of these parcels currently meet the three-acre minimum for rural residential, and along with the rural residential, even if they don't meet that minimum, is the 25-foot setback all around, rather than the 25 from the front and back and eight feet from the side, that low-density residential house. That's their main reasoning for going through this process, is that they want the eight-foot setbacks rather than the 25.
Okay. I guess my main reason is I don't want to vote for something, give them a wrong idea what I'm really voting on, so that was my concern. Why, the more information we had, I'd feel more comfortable when we're doing a comprehensive and a rezone, so. That's for both, in other words, I'm discussing 16 and 17 together when we're doing both. That's my concern. The rezone coming next.
Yes.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So, bottom line is, are you saying 16 and 17 cannot, you'd like both of them continued or just one of them?
I would like both of them to be continued.
Okay.
Any other questions for Megan? Anyone here in the audience here to speak on that at this time? Okay, chair to address a motion. We have to vote on them individually. Item number 16, please, a motion.
I move we continue item, or CA 2311 pursuant to the staff's recommendation.
Second. Moved and seconded to continue, per staff's recommendation, item CA 23-11. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're on to rezone 23-16, which is item number 17. Chair to address a motion.
Move staff's recommendation to continue this of RZ 23-16.
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue, per staff's recommendation, rezone RZ Rezone RZ 23-16 per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Onto item number 18.
Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain. The applicant is a person that does a lot of work at our motel for us for when we need him for some of the lawyer things that we need lately in the last year, so I will be abstaining, sir.
You beat me to the punch. I do have an explanation, too. Doyle has been a friend of mine for 30, 40 years. His wife Catherine, we all or most of us know Catherine. I've had one family contractual relationship. He represented my father-in-law's estate after he passed away, which my wife was the Doesn't help him today, but we didn't prevail on it, so I intend to vote on this matter today. I don't feel I need to abstain. I've never had a contractual relationship with Doyle, and I've just known him, and that's going to happen. I've had it happen before.
And we have, so... And he does a very good job for us, so I appreciate that.
Well, that'll compensate for him not making it with my... Go ahead, Cody.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 18 is conditionally used permit CU 23-32. It's to allow caretakers' residence on the subject property. The applicant and landowner, St. Patrick LLC. They are in the audience if there are any questions. Location is 23021 High Seega Road. Falls 1.05 acres, currently zoned commercial district with an existing land use of a restaurant. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. So the Planning Commission may consider seven criteria when they approve a conditionally used permit request. Those are on the screen. It appears that they would meet all the requirements for a conditionally used permit. Currently on the property, there is a restaurant that was built in 1987 per Department of Equalization records. There's a building permit from 2021 to replace a 1,180 square foot porch and to put storage below it. That storage below it turned into what they're proposing for the caretakers' residence, so that was unpermitted. This was right around for interdepartmental view. The county addressing came back and said that the existing property address must be posted. Approved the caretakers' residence will require a separate address. And a county ordinance enforcement came back and said this would clear any violation on the property. On September 25th, 2023, the Planning Commission continued conditionally used permit CU 23-32 to address the RVs on-site, the on-site wastewater treatment system, verification that the structure meets fire and building codes, and if a caretaker's residence is allowed in a commercial structure. On October 2nd, 2023, staff met with the owner and applicant who stated the RVs would be removed off the property, and the managers live on-site for how the housing is in the area. He disagrees with staff's interpretation of the caretaker's residence definition, and they do have state approval for the septic system. The staff has still not received any documentation that would show that the resident meets fire and building codes. The restaurant above is sprinkled, but per that meeting, the residence is not, which is required. On October 13th, 2023, the Planning Commission continued conditionally used permit CU 23-32 to allow applicants to apply for RV and living quarters. The applicant has picked up an application and is working through that to get that taken care of. Per Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 103B21, caretaker's residence is an accessory dwelling on a non-residential premise occupied by the person and the family who oversees the non-residential operation 24 hours a day. We do not believe that the living quarters inside the restaurant meet these requirements for an accessory dwelling. We have an accessory dwelling ordinance that specifically states it needs to be detached. And the owner of the property stated that the manager's living there due to the housing market, not that the operation... Not that the restaurant needs 24 hours of operation. So with that, staff is recommending deny... To deny without prejudice unless the request does not meet the Pennington County zoning ordinance for caretakers' residence.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody? I've just got one. The way our ordinance is written, and I kind of reviewed for it, there is no reference to whether someone wanted to do this for security purposes. In other words, they felt more secure about the outlet. Is that correct?
That is correct. Again, that's not what was stated to staff.
Right.
It was stated to staff that this was due to the housing market, not that someone needed to be on-site 24 hours a day.
Okay. Any other questions for Cody? Thank you, Cody. And applicant is here? Doyle, just for the record, you need to introduce yourself, please, for there are people listening. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Doyle Estes. I'm a lawyer and a real estate developer here in Rapid City in Box Elder. I am the sole member of the St. Patrick LLC. As a couple of you folks have indicated, I am a lawyer in town, and I'm actually specialized in tax law. And one of the rules in tax law is we look at substance over form. And so I'm asking you folks to think about that rule as you look at this ordinance. Now, the ordinance, Cody says, doesn't meet... My application doesn't meet the ordinance because it's not a caretaker's residence. So in my opinion, the two operational questions is what is a caretaker and what is an accessory? Because the definition we talk about here is whether the caretaker's residence is an accessory. So I have a definition here from Webster's Dictionary, if I could publish this.
Can we put it on the screen?
While he's doing that, I'd like to introduce the caretakers themselves, the people that are living there. Danny and Rosa. They have two minor children, one's in school, and obviously their daughter is four years old. Danny is one of the owners of the LLC. Him and his partner are the managers, and they're the ones that live in the lower level with their two minor children. So if we look at the definition here of accessory, it says it's object or device that's not essential but adds to the convenience or effect of something else. Number B, a thing secondary or lesser importance. On the fireside, which is now the Mexican Tapico, you don't think about that as a residence. You think about it as a restaurant. It's the residence is an accessory. The caretakers... These are clearly the caretakers' place. They're the managers of the property. They're part owners of the property. They're there 24/7. I've owned this property for a number of years. I've had a lot of trouble getting anybody to be out there, and the last resident I had before these people, they were there open four days a week. While they were closed one time, the water froze, the HPA system didn't work, and I had about $150,000 of damage to that property. So it is a security for me to have somebody living there. And how the living quarters came up is that they have been so successful that we had to take the area that was not winterized and add to the west. We closed in the balcony, which had earlier been closed in but not winterized. And when we did that, we added the living quarters for those folks. These folks have been wildly successful. The second year in a row, they picked as the number one Mexican restaurant in the Black Hills. This year, they're the number one restaurant, popular restaurant in Rapid City. It is very helpful to them if they can live with the property. The rent is all part of the lease with them. There is no special lease paid for the living quarters. They are the managers. They are employees. They are the operators of the place. So I ask you folks to do one of two things. Either accept the argument that I have that this is a caretaker residence, and obviously it's accessory to the operation, the restaurant. And if you can't accept that, then I ask you to refer it back to the County Commission to further define what's a caretaker's residence, because I clearly believe this qualifies under the statute. As to the RVs that have been out there, that I will... They have told me they will have them both off this week, so we're not going to pursue that at this time. So the only thing we have at issue there is the caretaker's residence. Any questions for me?
Where is the caretaker's residence in relationship to the restaurant?
On the west side, in the lower level. When I added on the balcony, it finished off the balcony, it's in the lower level of the balcony.
Because I'm familiar with this thing, but I didn't know where that was. I'll just make a comment. My wife and I had a business in Hill City some years ago, and we had an insurance company we dealt with for years. So we went to get the insurance on the business, and there was a restaurant next door, and they refused it. And I said, "Why?" And they said, "Because of the danger of fire from a restaurant." And I guess my first thought on a thing like this is you've got the restaurant, the grease and everything, and this is all part of it. I would almost think that's dangerous, but we're not talking about that, but it's a concern for me.
As the... As Mr. Cody Sack indicated, the upstairs are sprinkled, and I guess I didn't realize we needed to sprinkle the lower level. There is sprinkling in the system upstairs. When I remodeled it like 10 years ago, I sprinkled the whole building. The local fire department, a couple of those guys were friends of mine, they were very happy that I got that done. I was not required, but I did that.
So it has enough oomph built into the thing to work the sprinklers?
I have spent maybe $300,000 in this building. Yes, I'd sprinkled it about 10 years ago on the second floor.
But not on...
I didn't realize that. So if that's a big issue, which apparently it is, if you can give me 30 days delay on this, I'll get sprinkled from the lower level.
Now, that was my question. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Estes? Thank you. Thank you, Doyle.
Thank you.
Before we get to a motion, because it's not appropriate to do after a motion, I've got to throw in here, and I did let Brittany know my thoughts here a while back on this particular one after we continue last thing. Since COVID, we've had rather an... Well, a lot of additional accessory dwellings, so to speak, but most of the people that are having management and employees involved with their business are parking RVs and all sorts of things out there. There's quite a number of them out there now that don't get turned in, and they're involved. Most of our... What would you call it? Small, unincorporated areas have allowed their businesses to have additional employees and managers and this sort of thing because of the housing situations that we have around here. It is very difficult for some of these folks to start out and do a business. And I just want to put that in. That's something to consider. We look the other way on a lot of these, or at least they're not getting reported and run across through our department as violations, but there are a number of RVs that move in and out from the spring to the summer or through the fall. Right now, that we have employees as part of other businesses, and I've driven by a number of them. So I wanted to bear that in mind. If the commission feels that the word accessory doesn't fit, I'd be more inclined to let him at least pursue his case as a hardship in the... Before the Board of Commissioners, but...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I take no exception to this family living inside that area of the restaurant. It's... The only thing I really had any angst with was RVs out in the parking lot. Those have a lot of different things that go through my head. I understand the reasoning behind why somebody might need to live in a RV temporarily for job purposes. There's quite a few people that travel around to electrical or whatever, live out of their RV full-time. So I could see a case for that, but I understand the RVs are gone, so I really take no exception to authorizing this residence inside this restaurant at the time.
I did want to throw that in there, too. I'm opposed to having the RVs unless you go through it the appropriate way, which an example... All I can produce as an example would be the winery up near Hill City. They built a separate RV park under the appropriate guidelines that we have in the county.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It might be something for us to look at in relation to our planning ordinance, because I think this is going to be more and more common that business owners have to provide some housing for their key employees, and it's nice that it's maybe a permanent structure instead of an RV, so...
There's quite a few businesses out there where they have residences above or below, you know, where a retail shop, the family lives up above and they run the shop down below.
However, I note that a lot of them are grandfathered beyond what our ordinance...
I don't disagree.
The department noted that to me, that a number of them are grandfathers, and that really is not germane to the issue, but I understand it added into my thinking, too. Yes.
Yeah, it just... It helps the businesses succeed in areas where they may not necessarily succeed all the time, because they can share a residence with their business. I like to see businesses succeed, not fail.
I think our building codes, if the permits done, require additional fire safety and certain things be initiated if a structure is in a commercial building. So I... We have that in place now. We do have building codes that would require them to do a better job if this happens in the future, if we kind of set a precedent here about going against the wording as we've seen it before. Continue on. I've just... They educated me pretty good up at the desk when I brought this up the first thing. Any other comments before we talk about a motion? Chair will address a motion.
I move we approve CU... Or 23-35.
Is there a second?
Are you approving per staff's recommendation to deny without prejudice, or are you...
No. No, to approve.
To approve. I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and approved to approve CU 23-32. Discussion. I would like to have... There's going to need to be a number of conditions then. Is that not correct?
Correct. So Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. If the Planning Commission is moving to recommend approval, I would recommend that we continue at the 30 days as Mr. Estes requested to allow them time to do the fire sprinkler and to allow staff to put the conditions in for the conditionally used permit.
I'll withdraw my motion and move to continue this item for 30 days.
Is there a second to the continuing?
Second.
December 11th.
Wait, that would be two meetings? That'd be the 10th of December.
It'd be December 11th.
11th.
Who moved to do that continuance? Karen?
Karen moved. I second it.
Yep.
Before we vote on that, is that going to be acceptable to the applicant?
I'm much approved. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other discussion from the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Onto item number 19.
Can I just say something when I'm here? You guys really are quick.
Oh, excuse me. Before we go on to item number 19, let the record note that...
I abstained.
Deb abstained from the voting, so the voting would be six. Thank you.
They plan it, so I can't talk as much. Then all the easy stuff comes out.
Really quiet today. You've been very quiet, Deb. Thank you for all the treats.
It actually five.
Item number 19.
So Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 19 is conditionally used permit CU 23-34. This was heard at the previous Planning Commission meeting. I'll get you the date. October 23rd. It was continued to allow the homeowners association to work out their process because they had an issue with the ADU and thought it was against their covenants. Since then, staff received one opposition email to it, and then the same person emailed and rescinded that opposition. And I believe you have a copy of an HOA apology stating that it's okay. So with that, staff is recommending approval of conditionally used permit CU 23-34 with conditions.
So moved.
Questions for Cody before?
Aye.
Moved, excuse me, second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation. Item number CU 23-34. It's nice to see that our recommendation actually took some... It moved it forward. I mean, it's nice. We try. A lot of people don't realize that we're set... I, I mean, it's nice. We try. A lot of people don't realize that we're citizens, just volunteer citizens like them, that only one member is a liaison member from the board of commissioners. And I think they took it to heart and they kicked it around the neighborhood before it came back here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cody. Go ahead.
My discussion would be to give kudos to the neighborhood to come together and keep us all informed of the letters, and it helps us make our decisions, so.
Any other discussion from the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item number 20.
Item number 20 is the county board report. Uh, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the October 23rd, 2023 planning commission meeting.
Questions for Brittany on that matter? Items from the public. Our public is absent. They really don't, the public doesn't talk to us much. Do they talk to you guys very often?
Last meeting.
So it does happen. We very seldom, well, we've had maybe one in my time back on the commission, we've had one, so.
We usually do in public comment or other issues. Just, it's not always just what's on planning, some of the other stuff we're doing. But I appreciate the public comment. I like people giving their point of view.
Is it because we listed at the end, you suppose?
Well, ours is at the end too, Charlie.
Is it?
Yeah.
No public, items from the staff, building report.
Just our building permit report. We're the exact same as we were last year at this time, 465 permits. Um, we had quite a few single family residences this month. We had 16, um, which was kind of an uptick from previous months. Um, so we're kind of steady with what we have seen.
I have a question on it. The, under public works utilities, we've got 11,753,08. What was, I've probably ignored it for the last several months, but I was just wondering what, what that was.
Um, that was the upgrade to the city of Rapid City's wastewater treatment facility.
Thank you.
How about the permit, that was last year for the deal out there, wasn't it?
The wind farm, there was a significant one as well. So usually those public utilities are that or the recreational ones. Any kind of roller coasters or things like that can get expensive as well, so.
Karen points out, that kind of carried us this year in the dollars and cents wise. Any other questions for Brittany on the building permit report? Thank you. Items from the membership.
I'd like to thank you guys for your service and what you do up here. It's not easy sometimes, and it does take a lot of work. Um, if you're doing your work and you're looking at every aspect of what you're making a decision on, I don't always agree all the time, but that doesn't mean I don't appreciate you. So, um, I think I've said this over and over again when I've been up here, but it takes a lot of work. And it just, for, I don't know about personally, for me, it's very interesting, everything that's on there, what you learn up here. So, uh, it's pretty cool. I was on the planning commission before I was a city councilperson, by the way, too. So I loved it. That's why I moved to the next step, so.
Thank you, Deb. The, uh, one of the things I wanted to throw in was I really enjoyed the update Lloyd gave us last time on the, the vacation home rental ordinance, because I think we're all watching that kind of, we, we took a bunch of thumps in the head, so to speak, over that one. And, and so did the people on the committee. It was a tough thing, but I think they did, the whole process worked, I thought. But that's just the comment.
And now it sounds like the city will be taking it up again at some point. They're kind of catching heck for all the vacation home rentals.
I think there's a lot of people watch us in our planning department on a couple of issues. They did years ago on the septic, and everybody went and jumped on our septic. I believe Lawrence County watches this closely about our vacation home rentals. So it's nice to feel that our work is at least appreciated by even others outside of the county, so. I agree. That's my only comment. Any other comments on the membership?
Speaking of the HOA, uh, or the, excuse me, short-term rentals, uh, public radio this morning said that Rapid City was going to have a hearing, uh, just an informal thing, I guess, at the library coming up soon. And I found that interesting to see just what slant's going to come out of that thing.
I'd be surprised if it didn't go forward, because I think they may have a lot more people show up than they think. I still, my biggest concern, and it registered with all of you, I think the state needs to get out of this business of the 14 days and do away with that and let the areas that want to regulate it handle it. That creates such problems and, and holes to jump through, black holes that you got to jump through. The state published in that 14 days versus the old look and the other way really has done a number as far as trying to do a good job with vacation rentals.
So, um, you guys did a good job, and I, I wasn't in favor of the ordinance. Um, I based it on, uh, we didn't have a lot of complaints to change the ordinance. You change ordinances because you have a lot of complaints and there's a lot of issues. The goal was to bring more people in compliance. To me, I've, just from being in politics long enough and, and watching the public, the more rules and regulations you put on them, it makes them turn more way, not towards. So, um, I appreciated all the work done, but I didn't get at that point, um, it looked like to me overregulated for the goal in which we were, um, trying to get to. So at that point, I voted no and probably will vote no unless we change something differently on it. Because like I said, if you don't have a lot of complaints and, and your goal is not met by what you're doing and the staff not being able to follow through, that's what you got to worry about. A lot of times is we got to protect our county, because if you put more rules and regs, you need another person to go make sure those rules and regs are followed. Um, so all of those three things to me, um, by the time we're done, didn't make sense, um, to vote for the vacation home rental. Just so you know why I voted, I think people, and like I said, I like knowing their opinions and things, but if you're basing something on an ordinance that's already working, um, we should probably have went through the process and tried to probably either lessen what some of those rules are, or at least make it simplified by the, so the planning staff could enforce them. So I think that should maybe have been said at the committee, and maybe it was, Charlie, because you were there. So I'm going to be in, in full disclosure, I didn't go to any meetings. I liked them to do their work, but I thought they would take some of that stuff away just because of some of those reasons. But, um, it actually became more inform, you know, more rules and regs, so.
One thing I'd like to point out from sitting through all those is that didn't exist in the previous two that were done. And just for your help and the commissioners, I was greatly surprised that the most difficult recommendations for improving or changing came from those that were already operating.
Right.
That's an interesting thought when you think about it, versus what you were saying, usually more recommendation. They were very vocal about moving forward that this was a good thing, and to tighten it up didn't bother them at all. It bothered them that there was people operating outside of the loop, uh, that caused them more problems than the additional regulations.
And I could, I could appreciate that, but just from being a rule and regulation person that deals with people that either follow through or not.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, if you don't have enough complaints to change it, I, I have to base it on that. And number two, if you're not going to meet the goal that you're thinking, like I said, if you put more rules and regs on people, um, I don't think that makes them come in more compliance. It more makes them go, okay, now, not only did I did not like it before, that's why I don't do it. I don't like it now. So, um, that's my opinion, just from being in here, what, 16 years? So, um, like I said, I'm going to, I'm going to say I appreciate the committee and all the work, because I've been on the other side of running committees on different areas where people like or dislike. So I appreciated everybody on that committee, and I appreciate this board. But, I guess I don't always agree, but that doesn't mean I don't think you do a good job.
Thank you. Any other comments from the membership?
Did attend the South Dakota Planning Convention in Mitchell. Um, and over there, they had some, uh, very interesting discussion on Roberts' Rules. Um, it wasn't exactly what I was hoping it would be. Um, they were talking a lot of ways of how to, um, run a meeting to get the results that you want. So, uh, when you, when you bring up public comment, they always say, put it at the end of the agenda, because you've burned out most of the public and they're gone, and then you don't have the argument. Um, so this was a, a group of two that put on the presentation that actually go around and, and, um, run meetings for multiple counties because they're too small to have their own planning commission. Um, so it wasn't really the rules of order that I was looking for. Uh, yeah, but they did have some interesting strategies. Um, the rest of the conference, um, they talked about a lot of compliance and, uh, future things that I want to give kudos to our planning staff. They already do the majority of those things that they were suggesting. So, we're ahead of the bell curve, so.
You know, I'm going to throw in one more thing that always amazed me. I always thought that attorneys were required to have some educational background in Roberts' Rules of Order. If you think of the attorney things that are going on, that are all run by Roberts' Rules of Order, all the way up to our federal government, nowadays, they don't even have to take a course in it. There's an elective listed out that.
Alexa, we're saying as planning commissioners and commissioner, you make sure you, um, review that, and we're going to have a.
Well, and they expect us to know, plus, when we get in court, if you don't think they wouldn't take us apart if we violated those rules while we were in process.
I'm just teasing her. And I, I'm agreeing with you, Charlie.
Isn't that terrible? You'd think at least our attorneys would have to have some background and education, but most of them don't even own the book.
I can contest, I can contest that Alexa had the book at the meeting that had a bunch of flags on it, so.
Well, and it's tough. If you, if you have the whole book, it's tough. It's a tough reading book, and there's, it seems typical of a rule situation for everything, there's a door out, it looks like, and then you got to hunt that up, so.
Well, we do Roberts' Rules of Order, but we also changed some of it for what county does or what our commission does, not to be, um, not legal or anything. I'm not saying that just because it simplifies it, um, to a certain extent. We still have to follow, it's based on rules and regulations still, so.
I'm always amazed that your bylaws are slightly different than our bylaws, too.
I don't want to answer that. That'll plead the fifth. I'm teasing you, Charlie.
Yeah, but no, it's, it is different, and it is odd. I would think that's a, something that could be looked at in the future.
I'd make a suggestion when I became chair, um, in city and county before, they have those meetings, you guys, on YouTube. And it's easier to mimic, and then you could see some of the, they'll say, uh, point of order, they'll pay for, you know, different. And for me to read it is, is okay, but for me to see it and how it's run, it's, it's lots simpler to look at or a lot easier to figure out how to run the meeting. So, and then you understand all the terminology, because they'll use it in different circumstances. That's how I learned. So, just a suggestion, not only for Kevin, but Kevin and Karen and Charlie and.
Any other comments from the commission? You're in your slot. Hearing none, chair will address a motion that is adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn the planning commission meeting November 13, 2023. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, meeting's adjourned.